...Glen Street. First, I'd like to address some things that might have been mentioned in the address. First, we'll start with the tax rate. I want you to stop saying, "We didn't raise the taxes because we didn't raise the tax rate." What you've done was you sent out your assessor and reassessed everybody so you can increase the revenue you take in. So our taxes went up. You can exalt and say all you want, "We didn't raise your tax rate." But when you come in the back door with the assessor, we pay more and you get more. That being said, I'm going to move on to... We'll go to the budget. You say you care about the taxpayers and you're fiscally responsible with the budget process. Now, you can't be fiscally responsible with the budget process if you leave five and $600,000 of net... zero net worth positions on the budget that don't belong there or that were created to give positions to your nepotisms and cronyisms that clearly exists here in this administration. Start with the bonding. You did more bonding last night for about $3 million. And you put an application in for a grant for $5 million with a 75% match. So that's another $3 million. That's $6 million of money last night, okay? That you are going to incur or spend. And who's going to pay for that? And why last month it was not good to make debt and take money out of the contingency fund to buy police vehicles? That's no good because he would have to pay the interest. But this month, you borrowed $23,000, bond for $23,000 to fix the pipe plant. I believe that that's only the tip of the iceberg while you bonded it, okay? Because you're going to probably bond more and more. And $70,000 bonded for something else. And $50,000 for a study of the Twoskill Creek runoff. Who allowed them to build the houses in that wash, down that creek? And why are we responsible? And are you aware that the Army Corps of Engineers, when they raised the dike at Bradwill's property, put a tunnel in to divert the overflow down Washington Avenue, down Twoskill Creek? So you're going to spend money to study this? You've got employees on this budget that don't belong in this budget. You've got people on the council that are educators. And where do they work? For the school system. You've got educators on this payroll that don't belong on this payroll. They belong on the school system payroll. I've told you numerous times, I resent paying city taxes when I pay school taxes for this. That you send environmental educator with a box turtle to the town of Ulster. Or you send them to the Bradley School, 5th grade, to teach them recycling. That's not our position, okay? There are a few things I may miss tonight because I haven't got any prepared statements. Hi, Ariella. I know you're a nice person, but the people you work for are a bunch of fake news, okay? And I don't exist for them. You know, they never mention me, God forbid. And I'm glad there are other outlets here to document what I'm saying, okay? So if I forget anything, I'll have another opportunity. But don't say how you're concerned about the taxpayers when you're giving out pilots that do not return any... anything substantial, any jobs creation. 35-year tax plan for a pilot for the Governor Clinton or the Yosman House is ridiculous, okay? The hotels, I don't know how they got away with it, okay? But that being said, I will keep my eye on all of you. And I'll be back next month. But I don't think you're doing the right thing for the citizens of this city, okay? No matter what you say. It's obvious. You can see it in black and white. Thank you. And next year, instead of coming in the back door to raise our taxes, you're going to come in the front door and you're going to blame it on unfunded mandates. And you created those unfunded mandates because if the people knew that we were going to incur $3 million for that traffic circle, which never came up when that traffic circle was passed two years ago, when 200 people came to this hall and didn't want that traffic circle, okay? But you gave it to them anyway, but there was no mention that it was going to cost us $3 million to do the substructure of that circle. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Vincent Ruwa.
Hi, my name is Vincent Ruwa. I live on West Chestnut Street. I came tonight to advocate for bringing the RUPCO zoning request back to Laws and Rules Committee because I think that's what should happen. But I listened to the Majority Leader's view on the status of the city with interest. And he made quite a few points with which I disagree. And I was very disappointed that the person who earned the right to be the minority leader isn't given the opportunity to present a counter view. So I think that rather than talk about the Alms House, I want to take the Majority Leader... one of the Majority Leader's points to task. He referred in the beginning to a healthy fund balance. And he referred to it two or three times, if not more. Well, I don't believe the city has a healthy fund balance. I think it is teetering with its fund balance. I think its fund balance is within $300,000 of the minimum allowed by the council's resolutions for the minimum fund balance that it can have. So how does fund balance tie in with what you're going to be asked to do later on tonight? I was looking at the agenda, and as the previous speaker said, there's a lot of expenses and bonds that are going to be... come up tonight for a consideration for either deny or accept. So how does fund balance tie into this? Well, the common council is regularly tasked to consider new unanticipated expenses, ones that are not foreseen. I feel, especially based on the Majority Leader's statement, that he thinks we have a strong fund balance, that it is each one of your responsibilities to know what the city's fund balance actually is. Because the common council resolutions require fund balance stay above 10% of our annual budget. So what do we know about the city's fund balance tonight? Let's just kind of frame this discussion. We know that it is budgeted to decline from about $5,500,000 in 2017 to $4,550,000 in 2018. We know the minimum fund balance allowed by the council resolution is $4,250,000. So that means there's $300,000 left, only $300,000 left in our fund balance before Kingston will be in default of its own rules. These numbers are not manipulated. They are the mayor's numbers from his own emails. So you folks, each of you, is tasked with monitoring the situation. Governmental accounting can be confusing, so let's try to simplify this. First, let's disregard insignificant expenses. Any significant expense you're going to be asked to look at is going to be bonded out. So if I, as a former CPA, were asked to approve a bond for a valid purpose, what would I ask? I'd ask two questions. What is the annual amortization going to be? And what impact does that have on our fund balance? Two simple questions. I think each of you should try to remember to think about those when you're thinking about expense approvals or denials tonight. So I have concerns about the city's fiscal health. And to give you a couple of those, it was mentioned before that $225,000 was approved to be spent on new police cars at the end of '17, but that was not in the '18 budget. I was told that the $225 was going to come out of contingency fund. So now we have another term that we have to deal with. What's contingency fund? So think of contingency fund as a transfer from fund balance over to a separate account, contingency fund, for specific purposes. And that specific purpose largely is to cover anticipated contract settlement costs. So we're supposed to have $1,550,000 over here, or $1,500,000 over here, and $4,550,000 over in fund balance. So, okay. So is our contingency fund, which is budgeted to be $1,500,000? $1,500,000? Or is it $1,500,000 less $225,000? It's not clear to me where the $225,000 came out of. It wasn't budgeted in '17, so it didn't come out on an expense line. Didn't come out of fund balance. But if it came out of contingency fund, then do we have $825,000 in contingency fund? If we do, then we have less than our controller told us we needed to cover anticipated contract settlement costs. And then that means it's going to have to come out of fund balance. I don't know the answer, but I think that I would want to know if I were in your shoes.
Benny, maybe I can help you out.
Over $3 million?
Maybe I can help you out. It came out of the 2017 contingency budget, nothing to do with the 2018 budget, just so you know.
So then you're saying that the contingency budget was... No, that doesn't make sense, Jim.
Why doesn't it?
Because I'll tell you why. I'll tell you why, but I still want to go on with the rest.
Oh, yeah, I don't want to debate you anyway, so go ahead.
I'll tell you.
Go ahead.
So the contingency budget number was developed at the end of the summer. And the mayor said he was adding $500,000 to the then contingency budget to bring it up to $1,500,000 at the end of the summer. Nobody, as far as I know, from talking to people that were on the council, nobody knew about $225,000 coming out of any contingency fund until December. That was... That came out of left field. So it doesn't make sense that it came out of the '17... If it came out of the '17 contingency fund, then more money had to be allocated to the contingency fund. In other words, instead of a loss of $940,000 in 2017, it would have had to have been reported as $940,000 plus $225,000. It's not what happened. I know that's what you think happened, but it's not what happened. So over $5 million in bonds was approved in December of '17. None of this amortization was included in the '18 budget. I've checked with your controller. $3 million of this bonding is going to be the responsibility of the general fund. So how much of that amortization do we have to deal with in '18? Could be as little as $150,000, $175,000, could be as much as $300,000. I don't know. I don't know how that $3 million is going to get bonded out. Is it going to get bonded out 30-year, 25-year, 20-year, 10-year? I don't know, and neither do you. So now we've got a question. How is the bonding from '17 going to affect our fund balance? We only have $300,000 left with which to play before we go into default of our own resolution. How about the $50,000 bond for Twoskill Creek? Anybody know how that's going to get amortized? I'm not... I don't think I'm supposed to interact, but I'm going to guess that you don't. Is it a 30-year bond, 25-year bond, 20-year, 15? I'll tell you, it's a 5-year bond. It's going to cost you $11,000 a year. Okay, $11,000. That's further decrease in the fund balance. How about the pipe plant bond? That's going to cost you $6,000. So it's critical to know what the anticipated annual cost will be for each bond's amortization. And now that I've put this question out there, I would hope that there is some sort of discussion before you actually vote on new expenses this... tonight that are not in the '18 budget. These expenses or bond amortizations are going to reduce fund balance below where it is today. And there's only $300,000 that it can be reduced before you're in default. So in conclusion, each of you as common council members needs to know how much you can deplete the city's fund balance before violating council rules, which require a fund balance be maintained at 10% of budgeted expenses, which is $4,250,000. You have $4,550,000. I don't believe any of you have been given this information, and therefore, I think all requests for expense approvals need to be tabled until you can make an informed decision. Thank you for your time and good luck.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
That's it.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak at the podium at this time?
Hearing no one, I now declare this portion of the council meeting closed. We now enter into Claims and Communications. Hearing no discussion, they'll be on file in the clerk's office. Can I get a motion to dispense with the second reading of the general bills and pay same? Second, all in favor? Opposed? The bills are paid, 9-0. We now move into Report of Committees.
Resolution number 16.
Resolution number 16 of 2018, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the adoption of a bond ordinance in the sum of $50,000 for the Twoskill Creek Drainage Analysis Project and authorizing the mayor to execute related documents.
On the question, Alderman Carey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Ralph Swenson for bringing this forward. This is something that since I've been in office, I've been trying to get a resolution for because there's a major problem going on back there with some houses that are in jeopardy of actually sinking into the creek. And I think this has been a long, ignored problem. And I also want to thank the Finance Committee for seeing this through and seeing the importance of this. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? Seeing no one else, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 9-0. We now move to Resolution number 17.
Resolution number 17 of 2018, Bond Ordinance Dated February 6, 2018, An Ordinance Authorizing Engineering and Design Work for the Twoskill Creek Drainage Analysis Project in and for the City of Kingston, Ulster County, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of $50,000, and authorizing the issuance of $50,000 bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Long roll, long roll.
Alderman Morell. Alderman Coop.
Aye.
Alderman Scott Childress.
Aye.
Alderman Worthington.
Aye.
Alderman Carey.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman O'Reilly.
Yes.
Alderman Shabbett.
Yes.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
It's 9-0. Resolution is adopted. We now move to Resolution number 18.
Resolution number 18 of 2018, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the implementation and funding in the first instance 100% of the federal aid and state Marchiselli program aid eligible costs for the Broadway Streetscape Transportation Federal Aid Project and appropriating funds therefore.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 9-0. We now move to Resolution number 19.
Resolution number 19 of 2018, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing additional funding to proceed with the design costs of the Hurley Avenue Paving and Complete Streets project.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
The resolution is adopted, 8-1. I move to Resolution number 20.
Resolution number 20 of 2018, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the adoption of a bond ordinance in the sum of $70,580 for engineering and design costs of the Hurley Avenue Paving and Complete Streets project, authorizing the mayor to execute related documents.
Long roll.
No, not on this.
Okay. On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 9-0. We now move to Resolution number 21.
Resolution 21 of 2018, Bond Ordinance Dated February 6, 2018, An Ordinance Authorizing Engineering and Design Work for the Hurley Avenue Paving and Complete Streets project in and for the City of Kingston, Ulster County, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of $70,580, and authorizing the issuance of $70,580 bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof.
On the question, long roll.
Yep.
All right.
Alderman Ventura Morell. Alderman Coop.
Aye.
Alderman Scott Childress.
Aye.
Alderman Worthington.
Aye.
Alderman Carey.
No.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman O'Reilly.
No.
Alderman Shabbett.
Yes.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted, 7-2. We now move on to Resolution number 22.
Yeah, I didn't... Resolution number 22 of 2018, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation for a New York State Water Infrastructure Improvement Act grant in the amount of $5 million for the wastewater treatment plant upgrades necessary to maintain compliance with the October 25, 2016 Modified Speedy's Discharge Permit and to execute any and all related documents.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 9-0. We now move to Resolution number 23.
Resolution number 23 of 2018, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the adoption of a bond ordinance in the sum of $1,500,000 for replacement of water infrastructure in conjunction with the New York State Department of Transportation Roundabout Project at I-587 and Albany Avenue.
On the question. Hearing no... Alderman Morell.
As you know, I'm the council liaison for the water board. And it is my understanding that this is work that would have needed to happen regardless. This is infrastructure that is in this repair that needs upgrading. And I think it will benefit us. It's not only the right position, but more fiscally responsible to fix things before they become an emergency. Also, by doing it now, taking advantage that this is already being dug and repaid, we will be saving thousands, if not millions, of dollars.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on the question? Hearing no one else, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 9-0. We now move to Resolution number 24.
Resolution number 24 of 2018, Bond Ordinance Dated February 6, 2018, An Ordinance Authorizing the Replacement of Water Infrastructure in New York State DOT's I-587 Roundabout in and for the City of Kingston, Ulster County, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of $1,500,000, and authorizing the issuance of $1,500,000 bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof.
Long roll.
Alderman Coop.
Aye.
Alderman Scott Childress.
Aye.
Alderman Worthington.
Aye.
Alderman Carey.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman O'Reilly.
Yes.
Alderman Shabbett.
Yes.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ventura Morell.
Resolution is adopted, 9-0. We now move to Resolution number 25.
Resolution number 25 of 2018, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the adoption of a bond ordinance in a sum not to exceed $800,000 for engineering, design, and pre-design investigations for the renovations of the Kingston Water Department's Cooper Lake Dam and West Dike in accordance with New York State Department of Environmental Conservation 2009 Dam Safety Regulations.
On the question. Alderman Scott Childress.
I would like to say that I think this is something very important for us to do. It is all the... But it is something that the state is requiring us to do. The state is requiring that we repair the dam out there at Cooper Lake. However, with this design, the Water Department is looking at some innovative ideas. For instance, looking at the possibility of adding infrastructure that will make it possible for them at some future date to raise the dam to a higher level, which will help us in instances where we may have droughts, we'll be able to hold more water at that future time. So I'm very much in favor of this resolution.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? Hearing no one else, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 9-0. We now move to Resolution number 26.
Resolution number 26 of 2018, Bond Ordinance Dated February 6, 2018, An Ordinance Authorizing Design Costs in Connection with the Cooper Lake Dam Rehabilitation Project in and for the City of Kingston, Ulster County, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of $800,000, and authorizing the issuance of $800,000 bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof.
Long roll.
Yes. Alderman Scott Childress.
Aye.
Alderman Worthington.
Aye.
Alderman Carey.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman O'Reilly.
Yes.
Alderman Shabbett.
Yes.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ventura Morell. Alderman Coop.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted, 9-0. We now move on to Resolution number 27.
Resolution number 27 of 2018, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending modifications to the 2017 City Clerk's Budget.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 9-0. We now move to Resolution number 28.
Resolution number 28 of 2018, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2017 Civil Service Budget.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 9-0. Now move to Resolution number 29.
Resolution number 29 of 2018, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2017 Wastewater Treatment Facility Budget.
On the question. Hearing no debate, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 9-0. We now move to Resolution number 30.
Resolution number 30 of 2018, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing funds not to exceed $23,500 to pay the cost of engineering and design for repair of the pipe plant canopy in front of 43 to 45 North Front Street.
On the question. Alderman Scott Childress and then Alderman Coop.
I would like to say, again, I am definitely in favor of this. We have a problem with this particular section. It could be dangerous. We want to protect every resident who walks underneath that particular section of the pipe plant. But I also want to point out that this is a clear lesson in the need to avoid paying the least possible money for projects that we undertake. We need to hire the right people to do good work at fair prices. So I hope in the future that we'll be able to take a good lesson from this and not always go with just the cheapest, cheapest, cheapest.
Alderman Coop.
Mr. President, thank you. None of us feel good about having to do this. The pipe plant problems have been with us for years and probably will be with us for years to come. And the general council is working very hard on trying to... And the general council is working very hard on trying to, to solve some of these, these problems. But that is a very dangerous situation at that particular address, and if something happens there, believe me, our problems will, will increase exponentially. We need to get the right people in here. All due respect to our own engineering department, they cannot be all things, they're all projects throughout the people, they, throughout the city. They do an absolutely wonderful job on a lot of our own infrastructure problems. But this includes many different constructional details, and we need to get, to get the right people here. And I think we have the, have about to sign a contract with the right engineering firm to do this. It will give us some insight into what's coming down, down the Pike, so to speak. There are problems throughout that, that piping plan, and that will, this will give us some insight as to what other structural deficiencies and costs will be coming down. None of us feel really good about doing this, but we all ask the question, what if we don't do it and we have a, a, a major problem involving liability? So I'm in favor of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? Hearing no one else, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now move to resolution number 31.
Resolution number 31 of 2018, bond ordinance dated February 6, 2018, an ordinance authorizing engineering and design for Pike Plan canopy improvements in and for the city of Kingston, Ulster County, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of $23,500, and authorizing the issuance of $23,500 bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof.
Long roll?
Alderman Scott Childress.
Aye.
Alderman Worthington.
Aye.
Alderman Carey.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman O'Reilly.
Yes.
Alderman Shabbitt.
Yes.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ventura Morell. Alderman Coop.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted, nine zero. Alderman Shabbitt.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules in order to vote on three public safety issues due to the cancellation of the Public Safety Committee two weeks ago.
Thank you. And we'll read them, we have them, I showed them to you last evening. It was, it was due to a snowstorm last month, and, you know, they're handicapped signs mainly, and we, we try to get them up for when the people come home, they need them, not two months later, so.
Need a second on that motion.
Oh, so could I get a second on the motion to suspend the rules that we need? On the question, hearing none, I'll call for a vote on suspending the rules. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion is unanimous, nine zero, so we're going to read the resolutions, and you can probably vote them in a block, if that's okay with you, Alderman Shabbitt? Is that okay? Vote them in a block? Okay.
Okay, so they will be Resolution 32 of 2018, an ordinance amending an ordinance in relation to traffic on the public streets of the city of Kingston, New York, repealing handicap parking on Prince Street. This will be for 38 Prince Street. Resolution number 33 of 2018, an ordinance amending an ordinance in relation to traffic on the public streets of the city of Kingston, New York, repealing handicap parking on Second Avenue, and that's 56 Second Avenue. And resolution number 34 of 2018, an ordinance amending an ordinance in relation to traffic on the public streets of the city of Kingston, New York, adding handicap parking on Klingberg Avenue, and that is nine Klingberg.
Thank you. So we're going to have one vote for all three resolutions. Just before the vote, I believe the, the last resolution on Klingberg Avenue, did, did you bring that forward, Alderman Carey?
Yes.
Okay, so we, we probably just need to get the handicap number for the record, so could you just get that?
I have that.
Okay, it's just not on the resolution, so.
It doesn't go on the resolution.
Oh, you don't put it on there? Okay.
We just keep it in the file.
Do you have it, though?
It should have been on the committee report.
Okay. All right, on the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The resolutions are adopted, nine zero. That concludes the committee reports for the evening. Is there anyone else that would like to close the meeting in honor of everyone, of anyone? Actually, I have all mine at home, and I guess I'll have to do it next month, because I forgot. Anybody? No, you don't remember? Okay. All right, well, thank you. Okay, wait a minute.
Wait a minute.
Wait a second, we might be saved here.
Judy Harris.
Oh, yeah, right.
Fred Ryan.
You know, I'd like to say something about them individually, but maybe for this one instance this evening, we can mention their names, and then we'll, you know, next month we'll talk about. Julius Harris. If anyone has anybody, give me a name, and then we can, you know.
Fred Ryan.
Fred Ryan, of course, you know, two past employees of the city of Kingston. One was a police officer, and the other one worked for the Water Department.
And Chris Medman.
And Chris Medman, another city employee, worked for DPW. Stacy Hama, of course. She's a relation to current city officers, and. Steve, can you remember?
I can't remember. I went through enough weeks, but I can't remember.
I know, I know, it's just crazy.[1767.83]